Honorable Director of General City Council, you're being too order. Today is July twenty second seven P M. Pardon me, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America. The Honorable Attorney General of the State of Chicago. I forgot. The Honorable Attorney General of the State of Chicago.
Lord, please do the roll call.
Yeah.
Alderman McGee.
President.
Alderman Carr.
Here.
Alderman Rawl.
Here.
Alderman Johnson. Alderman Toya. Alderman Rosenberg.
Here.
Alderman Fairwell.
Here.
My pleasure, Your Honor.
Okay. We have guests attending our executive. When we jump to executive, it takes all three shorts. So we need a motion to go into executive session. Executive session has motion. Malcolm Fairwell, Samuel Alderman Carr, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The executive request of potential delegation about three issues. We're back to number four, hesitation of general proceedings. We have motion to approve the city council minutes from June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. So all the votes, all the he, all the favor.
Aye.
Motion, we need a motion to approve the minutes of April twenty twenty five, any of all. All the rolls, so all the move, all the favor.
Aye.
You have a request for approve the minutes of July tenth, twenty twenty five, any of all. Motion, all the very most involved power. Freshen, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
All this is approved, how are on the public session? Is there any public comment?
All right, good evening, mayor, and also to our council.
Sorry, I got to be my little disclaimer, I'm sorry. As a reminder, the public commentary is not a time for dialogue. Perks of the public commentary is for mayor and all in the city received with respect from their community. This in fact, a one-way communication to the city council. The city's administration department are available for discussion, thank you for that.
You're welcome. Okay, good evening, mayor, and also to our city council. Ali Clements representing Mission Covenant Church here in Blue Island. Want to let you know, I'm ecstatic about what's coming up this weekend on Saturday. Next July the twenty sixth, time is from twelve to five. We're hosting a Blue Island crusade. So we invite everyone here in the council and actually in the chambers to please come out and help support our event. Okay, also want to had a question though, that said regard to the beauty parlors or the barber shops and the closures. So you know, I don't know if you've addressed that before and I just didn't have a chance to hear it or listen to the answer or ask questions or whatever. So I am interested in that because I've been, I'm very observant. My grandson's been going around trying to find a place to sit and so if I can get an idea of what's actually happening, I appreciate it. Thank you so much, have a great evening.
Thank you. You have a follow-up comment?
Hello, city council, hello mayor. My name is Joe Surrattes, I'm from Forest View Mobile Home Park. I'll make this quick. Okay, um, we have a dream that one day the residents of Forest View Mobile Home Park will rise and take control of our own destiny. That we no longer will be at the mercy of absentee owners or park management that have a long history of preying on the weak and uninformed. We're tired of the rampant abuse and fraud park management and owners basically blame each other for. But instead, we will stand together as a community, staying in Forest View, self-managing our park with wisdom, empathy, equity, and justice. Um, we have a dream that one day our allies will come forward to guide us, not to dictate, but to empower. That they will share their knowledge and resources, helping us build a future where every resident has a voice. Every child can play without fear and every family can thrive in dignity. Yes, we have a dream that one day the mayor, the city council, and our state officials will recognize the strength and resilience of the Forest View residents. That they will not see us as problems to be solved, but as partners in progress. That they will support our efforts to self-manage, providing the necessary tools and opportunities for us to succeed. Yes, we have a dream that one day the stigma of living in a mobile home park will be replaced with pride. That our park will be seen as a vibrant community that provides economic and cultural profits to the city of Blue Island and its residents. We aspire to seek the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so hope is God for why we residents are in the, are, why we residents are in this dumpster fire that was not created by us. Until that day arrives, we seek cooperation and time to explore all available options. For example, conducting a simple relocation impact report, which we should demand the owners to pay for. Our goal should be to help these families find housing in our park. Or housing solutions that allow them to work smarter and not harder. With the support of our allies, the recognition of our leaders, and the strength of our Forest View community, we can turn this dream into reality. If this dream is completely If this dream is completely impossible, if you're saying that, that we have exhausted, that you have exhausted all reasonable solutions. If you are saying that pigs will fly before this dream becomes reality, then so be it. For the record, don't say that we did not try. Thank you for letting me speak, I look forward to future communications, thank you.
The full account? We got to A, A, mayor motion to approve payroll in July eighteen, twenty twenty five, not four hundred, four thousand, six hundred and thirty-six thousand, thirty-nine cents. All true. Alden Carr, second by Alden Fairwell, on a question. First, please do the roll call, please.
Alden McGee.
Aye.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Roll.
Aye.
Alden Matoya.
Aye.
Alden Rutherford.
Aye.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Six eyes, your honor.
There is, there being options to approve accounts payable, dated July ninth, twenty twenty five, not four hundred thousand, four five hundred reality cents. So, all, all controls, same well. Toreya, on a question, please do the roll call.
Alden McGee.
Aye.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Roll.
Aye.
Alden Matoya.
Aye.
Alden Rutherford.
Aye.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Six eyes, your honor.
Under C, motion to approve accounts payable, dated July third, five, without funding, four hundred and two thousand, five hundred dollars, four cents. Motion, Alden Roll, second by Alden Fairwell, on a question, on a question, Alden Roll.
Uh, just one thing, I'm sorry to get the chance to ask this over. On page eight of the, uh, papers, there's some papers to gather, I'll spell. One of which, uh, is labeled as a twenty twenty-three road program, I'm just curious why we're coming up with a twenty twenty-three payment. I know they're like, Bill, I'd ask them.
Sure. Uh, so this was just a closeout of the twenty twenty-three road program with Gallagher, and it was basically for retainage, um, that they keep until the project is complete.
All right, and was this anticipated? It will be coming?
Uh, yes, yes.
Thank you.
I'm here, Alden Roll.
Alden McGee.
Aye.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Roll.
Aye.
Alden Matoya.
Aye.
Alden Rutherford.
Aye.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Six eyes, your honor.
There is, under E, resolution of the city of Blue Island, county Illinois, authorizing transfer in criminal revenues from special tax obligation funds. In due course, tax increment finance district pursuant to sixty-five I L C S, by the love of itself, four dot boards, or pure. It's transferring monies from one tip to another tip, right on the four angle capital. Your motion. Alden Fairwell, second by Alden Roll, on a question. Please do the roll call.
Alden McGee.
Aye.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Roll.
Aye.
Alden Matoya.
Aye.
Alden Rutherford.
Aye.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Six eyes, your honor.
There is, under E, a resolution of the city of Blue Island, county Illinois, authorizing to approve the tax increment finance redevelopment agreement with Jerry's Place. It's the former Latin rhythm, the restaurant, is there motion? Alden McGee, so Alden Rutherford, on a question. Please do the roll call.
Alden McGee.
Aye.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Roll.
Aye.
Alden Matoya.
Aye.
Alden Rutherford.
Aye.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Six eyes, your honor.
There is, under F, an ordinance for the city of Blue Island, county Illinois, creating section one fifty dot 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 one seventy of chapter one fifty of the city code to be entitled, registration of proposing mortgage property. Is there motion? Alden Fairwell, second by Alden Toreya, on a question. Alden Roll.
Uh, yeah, I was, uh, I think I'd like to motion and table this, just, I don't know if we've had time to discuss, uh, the details of this agreement. And I know, I, I think they were supposed to give us some presentation, but, uh, maybe weren't here to do so. So, I mean, if this is impressing, I just mean, I purpose, just, just so we can discuss if you can see the flow of it.
I, I would concur, I don't necessarily, I just.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, it's not pressing, um, and actually it ties to the one right after this. So, it's basically registering proposed property and the government entity, this entity who every time Robert uses, um, then is charged of tracking these people down, registering the properties, and they're moving vacant property, a little motif. No problem, uh, we were doing it for six years, uh, because I guess they came to their presentation for our predecessors, but when they were, so that's how it landed on our feet, I didn't know it even existed, so we can wait until two weeks. If there's no opposition to table anything?
Good. It would be fit, F, N G. Under H, motion to authorize the city of Blue Island to apply for a credit card. We have a motion, we need a motion to.
So, H, we need a motion to authorize the city of Blue Island to apply for a credit card, Ellen, they backed by Windtrust Bank. The background is this, we had a credit card, one credit card for the city with, uh, Bank America, we want to keep everything in one house, we do everything with Windtrust, it's just a lot easier on our finance department. And we're a third-party bank just for a credit card that's where they use. Is there motion? Alden McGee, so Alden Matoya, on a question. Alden McGee.
This is in addition to the one, this will be replacing.
Questions, if not, roll call.
Alden McGee.
Aye.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Roll.
Aye.
Alden Matoya.
Aye.
Alden Rutherford.
Aye.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Six eyes, your honor.
There is, under I, resolution for the city of Blue Island, county Illinois, authorizing to approve purchase-sale agreement for twenty-one thirty-three West Hundred Thirty-Sixth Street. List the vacant lot, is there motion? First, Alden McGee, second by Alden Roll, on a question. Please do the roll call.
Alden McGee.
Aye.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Roll.
Aye.
Alden Matoya.
Aye.
Alden Rutherford.
Aye.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Six eyes, your honor.
There is, J, an ordinance for the city of Blue Island, county Illinois, authorizing approving lease agreement body between the city and Arcus Restaurant Group, LLC, or its signee, related to the lease of property located one thirty-three fifty-seven Old West Avenue. Is there motion? Motion, Alden Roll, second by Alden McGee, on a question. Please do the roll call.
Alden McGee.
Aye.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Roll.
Aye.
Alden Matoya.
Aye.
Alden Rutherford.
Aye.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Six eyes, your honor.
There is, mayor's announcements, uh, we're doing a round of crack sealing throughout the city. I'm going to ask to be put on social media again, it's probably been a few weeks since it was out there, but, you know, put it out there again. It's, uh, quite a few streets, uh, being, uh, crack sealed right now. The police, uh, were given notification less than forty-eight hours in advance, we did the best we could by notifying everybody yesterday morning. And again, as you know, we can get a hold of people, we don't tow their cars, if we do, we'll move to other parts. I know there's some residents have called, concerned, I think their car was towed, but we was just moving down the street. So, uh, just be aware, if any resident calls, see, it's going to be over the next few weeks, they're going to be doing some road maintenance. Um, yeah, it's all over the city, so affects every single ward. Right now, I think they started in the, what?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was shuffling, they were, they were throwing different locations.
That's what they. So, just make sure your constituents know, and I know we're back on social media again.
Are they, are they notified somehow that it was put somewhere or?
Usually, a police come to the door, and if they don't get anything, just move it like right down the street.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to get on social media for the meeting today, we put it out a while ago, when we did the recite, but we'll never do it again now. Any other questions about that, if not, it's the biggest thing I have going right now, and then. We have, uh, Saint Ignatius Carnival, I should mention, one hundred and twentieth anniversary starting August. I do have, uh, I will, uh, text the Alden later, we have a conflict with the cow in August, not pressing, nothing really pressing on the agenda, I'm going to ask for your opinion on it. We sort of just canceling it, other day we can, the cow, just the cow.
I want to thank everybody for the Fourth of July, uh, break, the employees, the community, the council, all the entries. Thank you so much, it was a huge success of the art, we have been starting on twenty twenty-six, so, um, we're working on that now. National Night Out is August fifth, everyone's invited, it's from six to eight, this will be the best that we've invited out, we have had so far, so don't miss out. And then again, like the mayor said, don't forget Saint Ignatius Carnival is August sixth through August tenth, and it's a hundred and twenty years, so don't miss that either. Well, I got.
You? City attorney, we already met, executive city administration.
Just one, just one quick note about the other handout that you have, uh, there's two handouts, I gave it to you, one we have to discuss, and executive. Uh, the other is the June, uh, flock audit from the flock cameras, which is a show that every, every, the flock was used for. Um, also, on the back end of that is some proposed policy language, we'd like the, the Aldern to review and give some comments, some thoughts on. The proposed lot of policy language was, uh, recommended language from the vendor, so take that into consideration. Um, but we're not the only municipality to have some of the questions and concerns around these things, um, so, uh, some of that is foundational language, some of it speaks more to some of the country that we're here, but it's as good a starting point as that here for what, uh, uh, the growth of the policy around these cameras would look like. Uh, also, in addition, that's not in there, um, Alden Monroe, I know you had asked about just, uh, accessibility, who, which of the, who the, what the department, so, just as a quick rundown. Uh, the ability to, to do search functions on it, and so, it's one thing to get the photo vehicle that's in the act of a crime that might come into your, you know, any officer can get, would, would get those alerts. Um, but the ability to do a search, which is where some of the problems that started some of this, uh, uh, this discussion came from, would be the chief, the deputy chief, the watch commanders, and detectives under our current policy. So, just to give you a baseline of where we're at right now.
Does that account then for that one thousand three hundred eighty searches that only be conducted by those roles?
That's my understanding of commander, yes. So, I know there's a broader discussion here, but I just wanted to make, uh, just put a pin on that, so.
I've just, I just had to reason through this, so I might have missed it, but I, you know, I'm reading, it says, uh, that you'll find the order of the searches as well, the access rights, the personal. The access rights are broken down to four roles, I think you just, you just said this, so that sentence just stands by itself, and that's just a piece of, it's not in here somewhere. There's no, I, I was looking through the document, and maybe I'm just misreading, I thought maybe the document had information about the access rights being broken down into four roles, and then. Yeah, and the sentence.
Yeah, and, and I am part of this, I, I had, I, I was going to list out kind of all the names of, of who has all access to, and just didn't have time for that. So, uh, yeah, so that was probably already part of the original crap, did a report to police I did, had done, but, um, uh, yeah, so, well, those. The, the listing I would have showed would have been the exact same, I think, I, I just said it was just chief, deputy chief, uh, you know, watch commanders, detectives, okay, thank you.
Alden Roll. Well, yeah, last second question, and just some thoughts and observations with, uh, first, thank you, uh, Mr. Wobbe for providing this. First, I think, you know, in light of some of the, uh, exposure that the block has gotten, this might be a good time to approach them about getting these statistics out in a way that is not onerous to the department. So, uh, that we have more steady insight, because I, I mean, the one thousand three hundred eighty searches a month is more expensive, uh, than I realized, uh, just system, see, sick room. So, in that vein, and it's just as a follow-up to something I mentioned in the last session, um, with regard to the city developing a data governance policy. Um, when I build data systems for healthcare, HIPAA is not, uh, a set of exact rules to follow. If there's a data breach, uh, that company then is assessed legally, or whether or not it took reasonable precautions to protect it. It's no different for a city that is collecting vast amounts of public data, through cameras like this, we should have a policy in place that describes how we provision access, uh, how we handle the data, how often we check in on these things. And similar to the economic development, that framework just makes it easier for us to collaborate around and eventually protects, uh, citizens and, and the data that we handle on the, so. Um, that's something I'm willing to leave, and again, in the, in cooperation with the administration, with the attorney, to make sure we derive something that's good, that's, so.
I just just found one on Josh's comment, um, I think I'm going to say the same thing with my own personality language. And, and again, very much appreciate your getting this report to us, it's a good first step, so I do appreciate that. But that is a criticism, but, um, it, it's kind of means of data, doesn't, I, I can't.
Hard digestion.
Yeah, so, anything that, you know, if you can work with Josh to make this digestible, it's my, for my brain, that would be great. Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out, I'll, I'll do that.
So, I just wanted to, to confirm what is stated as, last, uh, maybe that both accesses, I don't know, the tax laws. Share that, when that, that, uh, or, 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 done, do I, uh?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
You? Uh, all the minute, uh, comments, announcements, reports, all the car.
Yeah, um, I just wanted to talk about an incident that happened, it was like maybe two, three weeks ago. I was called because apparently a raccoon had been struck by a car on Highland. It was not dead, but it was unable to walk. And so, it was just kind of laying there curbside, and somebody called me, and they were very concerned. So, I called nine one one, because I figured this is a, a safety issue, you know, but child said, oh, the poor little raccoon, you know, picked it up, they could have got. Well, of course, nine one one is Cook County, and they kind of bounced me around, you know, of course, they needed to know, you know, all those questions they asked me, is this police or fire, and, well, so anyways, um. They transferred me to their animal control division, and they asked me, is this unincorporated or incorporated Blue Island? And I told them it was in incorporated Blue Island, and they said, well, then we can't help you, you have to call your police department and have them fill out a request. And I'm thinking to myself, this is absolutely insane, because I'm looking at it as a public safety hazard, and they're like, well, your police department needs to fill out a form and, and request that we come out. So, anyways, I called the chief, at, at that point, I just called the chief, and he took care of it. Um, but I'm wondering if we could maybe have an animal control phone number? I mean, because not everybody has the chief's cell phone where they could call and say, hey, we need this.
I think, very, it's, it's interesting, I had, there is similar experience about three or four weeks ago, that there was a pass up in the middle of my street, he'd been hit, but he was standing, bleeding, and the police were good enough to come in. And I'll take it away, but I, I could tell that was the thing they regularly do, you know, like, I appreciate.
I don't know, if you need an animal control officer, or maybe community service officers.
It's probably been a long time, it's been dedicated animal. Uh, they, 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 it's even the old ones, you know, a lot of cats, cat house over here, there's cats up here, I recently seen cats and, and little kids following behind, so, you know, um. And I've actually worked with my neighbors in order to take them to, um, be, you know, it's, it's, that's, but, um, but. It's, it's probably something, you know, I don't mind, we have a cat that actually follows the mail lady that helps deliver the mail, so, yeah, but, uh, uh. When they're breathing, any, I don't know. Sorry. I think, uh, um, you're a chief, uh, mayor's up, so you have a sidebar, I say, I'm thinking about the seat, there's any possibilities, really, stay in contact, just y'all.
We're all, my comments, questions, so, yeah. Uh, a regular meeting next is August, well, August twelfth, and we will attend that here, next meeting, not, uh, at the agenda. And, uh, so the other things to notify and discuss that we were ready for the passage tonight. I feel like meeting might not, and I'll text you guys about the cow, because it's, that, that we still stand, in, for, so. Um, we have a motion to adjourn. Alden Fairwell, second by Alden Roll, on the favor, say aye.